...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no religion, justice, or flaw.
If I could have a motion to accept next agenda, please?
Still moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, Dr. Harrison, I turn it over to you for our various recognitions.
Yeah, so, good evening, everyone. One of our highlights of our meetings throughout the years when we have the opportunity to stop and celebrate and acknowledge the wonderful accomplishments of our students. Tonight, we've actually scheduled an opportunity to bring a number of our high school students in to recognize what they've achieved throughout the course of this year and some recent accomplishments. So, that said, I would like to invite Ms. G M. to come up to the microphone to introduce each candidate or student. And students, when you come up, we come by the board and, you know, with all the colds going around, we'll do a little wave or a bow as opposed to the handshake. Mr. Friedman will give you a certificate of accomplishment on behalf of the Board of Education. All right, so, Ms. G M.?
Wonderful, thank you, thank you very much. As Dr. Harrison said, we are so proud of you, and we're also very proud to say to our students, we're counting center, ladies and gentlemen, and we wish you have good luck as well. Our students, ayes, that's what very hard throughout the year, and they really exhibited the habits of mind that our students really cultivated, taking about in our students. Our students have, we've got five kids here, and they're raising their kids, and they're learning. Tonight, we will recognize and celebrate the true-
Doesn't sound like that mic's picking me up.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, okay. Should I hold it? Yeah, okay, all right. Tonight, we will recognize and celebrate just some of our students' successes so far this year, because the year is still young, right? In a moment, I'll introduce each of you, but before I do so, I want to thank all of the family members that are here tonight. Without your love and support, your children wouldn't be able to accomplish all that they have. I also want to thank our teachers. Again, kind of K-12, everyone has shared a portion of their teaching and their inspiration, which is also part of why we're here tonight. So, I want to thank everyone, and I especially want to thank all of you, our students, and say, though we are very proud of you, I want to say you should be really proud of yourselves and of all that you've accomplished, so, well done. And so, with that, we'll get to some of our recognitions. I'll start first with the Regional Junior Science and Humanities Symposium Competition. That was a lot, right? JSHS, our JSHS winners. So, we have six students who are advancing to the competitions upstate. I'll start first with our first three winners who were from the poster presentations. So, first, we have Alex Savino, who won third place in the Engineering Physical Science category, so we'll have Alex come first.
(laughter) Everyone give him a wave.
That's work.
That's work.
Wonderful. Next, we'll have Max Edelman, second-place winner in the Computer Science and Computational Biology and Mathematics category.
(laughter)
Your mom said it.
Next, we have Rashid Gupta, who also won second place in the Computer Science and Computational Biology and Mathematics category.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Well done, too.
So, then, our next JSHS winners are also progressing to Albany. So, the first is, we have Aden Malone. Aden, who won third place in the Behavior category. What I also want to say is Aden is also incredibly talented. I've never seen anyone solve a Rubik's Cube as quickly. When I first started, I heard about Aden, and I was like, can I see this? Can I videotape you so I can show my kids at home? Incredible, and I've heard you're also renowned for your crepe making, so, congratulations to Aden. (applause)
I'm Ali, I'm Ali. He's got a station up there.
Miss Roy. You're welcome.
Where's Zach? Zach Mizrahi, who was unable to be here tonight, won second place in the Engineering Technology and Computer Science category. Again, Zach Mizrahi, so, we congratulate Zach as well. And finally, for JSHFs, we have Zoe Jacobs, who won first place in the Medical Science category. Congratulations. Next, we'll transition to the Regeneron Scholar Student. Rashid Gupta was just one of 34 students in the region to be named as a Regional Regeneron Scholarship winner, and we were able to celebrate where he was honored at Regeneron with his family, so, congratulations to Rashid.
Come again.
It's on your other certificate.
But don't worry, you'll get to come up again.
We saved one piece of paper, look at that.
Going green, okay, very good. Now, we'll transition to the third category that we're honoring tonight, which is our National Merit Scholarship finalists. As you know, the National Merit Scholarship honors students who show exceptional academic and potential for success in rigorous studies at the college level. This program will award 7,500 students nationwide with scholarships totaling $31 million. The winners will be announced later in the spring, and I am incredibly proud and impressed to say that we have three finalists. Our three finalists are Rashid Gupta, I feel like you could stand at least, stand.
She can come up there.
Good, good. Yeah, just come up and, oh, you have certificates. Oh, I wasn't sure, okay, all right, perfect, oh. No, I didn't know, because it was his third one.
Everything.
No, good, all right, perfect. I didn't know if that was on the same one. All right, wonderful. Adriana Pomieri. Wonderful. And Aidan Sullivan.
Good job, bud.
Congratulations. The final kind of recognition for this evening will be our valedictorian and salutatorian. I have just a few words to share, if I may. So, first, we have our valedictorian, Sarah Garcia. But if you can, Sarah, you can come stand here, but give me a moment to just talk a little bit about you. Sarah is passionate about, oh, yeah, come on up, thank you. Yeah, let's stand together. Okay, come, all right. So, Sarah is passionate about learning with a true appreciation for the classics. Sarah also values the importance of making personal connections, which is so incredible in this day and age of screens and technology, so, that's very incredible. You know, Sarah's kind of focused on people and relationships. Sarah is a member of our Track and Field Team, and she recently qualified for the New York City Championship in Speed Walking, and we did a clapout for Sarah. Yeah, Sarah is also a longstanding member of an outside choir group. She is a Sunday School teacher and is actively involved in charitable organizations, including Midnight Run and our Latin Club. So, congratulations, Sarah, and being our valedictorian.
Congratulations.
It's really awkward when you don't get a shake, everybody says.
Wonderful. And then, we have our salutatorian, Zoe Jacobs, and you want to come up here, Zoe? Let me say a few words about Zoe. Zoe is passionate about science and medicine, and we saw earlier Zoe's recognition in that category. She has been shaped in large part by her volunteer work at the Open Door Medical Center and at the Alzar School in Chile, where Zoe spent a semester her sophomore year. In addition to her academic pursuits, another area of passion of Zoe's is dance. Dance has been a significant part of Zoe's life, and it also serves as an opportunity for her to express herself creatively. Zoe has been dancing since the age of five, and she teaches ballet and shares her love of dancing with younger children throughout Westchester. Congratulations, Zoe. Again, thank you so much for the opportunity to celebrate just some of our students' many successes so far this year, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. G M., and congratulations to all of our students, and yes, you can go home if you want.
Yeah.
You can hang with us for a couple hours, if you'd like.
Someone's got to cool down.
It's not like my sweater, this is not a heavy sweater.
I was just saying, I don't know if it's me, it does feel warm.
Am I wrong? Look at Aaron, he's flush.
It's 50, whatever degrees.
For sure.
Yeah. So, this evening, I do have a few items to report upon. As was acknowledged before, we had the opportunity to celebrate the great accomplishments of many of our high school students. Ms. G M., you also acknowledged our girls varsity basketball team that's competing this evening in the sectional semifinals, which I think is why we're down one trustee this evening, who happens to be the dad of one of the players on the team. And Mr. Samuelson and Mr. Hanson are there rooting on our student athletes as well, so we wish them great luck, and we hope that, yep, and we hope that throughout the course of the evening, we'll get some great updates on their success. I also want to give a little shout-out for the IHS Musical and Drama Club, which will open its spring production this Friday and Saturday, 7:30 p.m., another show, 2:00 p.m. on Sunday, the Annual Spring Musical, which will be a production of Oliver. Tickets are still available, so we hope folks come out for a wonderful evening of entertainment and to be awed by our students' great talents. Also, this Saturday is the I F Annual Fundraiser with a Roaring Twenties theme, so, I also understand some tickets are available, so come on out and support the I F while supporting our schools and have a great time. It's right here in Irvington at the Hudson Loft. I know I F. will be sending out an email either tonight or tomorrow for that last call for tickets, so if you haven't purchased yours just yet, please look for that communication from them. In the coming weeks, we are partnering, and I say we, the district and the Board of Education are partnering with the P T S A's L S A Committee to launch an advocacy effort to support, to seek support for fair funding of our schools and additional funding and support in the area of mental health, so please look for emails that will come from the school district and the P T S A asking to join in this cause. We'll be utilizing the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association's Voter Voice Web Portal Tool, which is real simple. You can craft your own personal message, it gives you opportunities to select all the legislators that you want to send your message to. So, really, please join us in that, it's critical that your voice be heard. The last time we led a major campaign like this, Irvington, as a school district, had more participants statewide than any other school district, so we hope to let our voice be heard there once again. I also want to acknowledge that Board of Education nomination packets are now available. We do have three open seats come this July on the board, so if any interested community members are out there, please see our fine district clerk, Ms. Davies, who can provide you with the necessary materials up in the district office, and there's also details on the website and in the weekly district newsletters. And then, finally, and I think for me, and I know Carol and Mary will jump in with a couple other items, I did want to touch upon the coronavirus, which has obviously raised a great deal of concern now globally and locally with there being two cases in New York, one being in the city and another here in Westchester. The district is taking a lot of proactive measures in the cleaning and sanitizing our school spaces to make sure spaces are as safe and as healthy as possible for our students. On Saturday, my newsletter included some general information to the parent community. We've also created a resource page on the website that can be found on the district homepage or the Health Services website as well. Right now, the guidance that we are consistently receiving is focusing on how we, as individuals and as a school system, can support the health and safety of everybody, and that really comes down to a couple key points. That idea of voluntary home isolation, if you're sick, stay home, don't bring your illness to school or work with you. That idea of respiratory etiquette, when you're thinking about coughing and sneezing to make sure you're doing so into the crook of your arm, and using a tissue when available, and certainly avoid touching your eyes and mouth and your nose when you're out in public, of course, and then hand hygiene, that idea of regularly washing hands with warm soap and water or using hand sanitizers wherever available and possible. I know on a school district front, Carol, we're taking a lot of steps to make sure our schools are safe and as clean as possible for our students. The state of New York, the governor yesterday indicated that the state was going to be providing guidance for school districts and requirements for how schools are to be cleaned. While we have yet to receive that guidance, I would really guess that what we're doing internally would probably exceed many of the requirements that will come forth from New York State. So, Carol, do you want to take a moment or two to share some of those things we're doing?
So, if you recall, in the budget, we had put a request in for two more Clorox disinfectant sprayers, or actually like an ionic thing that goes on. So, we are accelerating the purchase of those two. We already have one, and we're going to have to take something that we were going to buy this year, and we're going to buy those instead. So, I've accelerated that, we've already got the order in, and so that way, we have one per school. But in the meanwhile, what we've been doing is we've been moving the machine around to the various schools. We start as early as 5:00 a.m. in Main Street School to disinfect that school in the morning, and then we're doing evening work in the other two schools, and we're basically trying to hit as many classrooms as we can in the time allowed. We also are using, you know, the Clorox wipes on all the doorknobs and bathrooms everywhere we possibly can. The custodians are basically making this their primary focus right now, is just constantly cleaning. The other thing, we've ordered more hand disinfectant, the hand sanitizer, and we're going to be putting dispensers all over the place. I will note that it's the alcohol-free dispensers, because that is what is indicated for students, especially young people, they're not supposed to have any alcohol-based products, so we'll be adding more of those all throughout. And so, basically, we've worked out a plan to share the device we have, to get new devices, to continually update and, you know, clean as much as we can, and we're using, you know, fortunately, I will say that this would have been a very difficult endeavor, because I'm having to use some overtime and some subcleaners to do it, but we had a light snow season, so I'm using some of the money I budgeted for snow overtime in order to do it here. So, there is an impact, of course, when you do things like this in a budgetary way, but I've looked at the numbers, I said, all right, we can do it, so. We're fortunate that it was a light snow winter this year, although I do hear that it's going to be much more snowy next year.
There we go.
That's the report, so, that's the cleaning report.
So, and I would say in general, we'll continue to keep the school community apprised of guidance and any special instructions as it pertains to school time experiences. We're in regular communication with all the experts from C D C., New York State Department of Health, who are holding regular conference calls or webinars. We're also communicating with our district physician, Dr. Catherine Huff, and I'm probably communicating with her whether a phone call or email three, four times a day, and making sure that we are making wise decisions for the health and safety of our students and staff. Finally, we're also looking very closely at some upcoming trips that we have and wanting to make wise decisions. We do have one international trip to France at the high school that will be just prior to spring break, and then a Washington, D.C. trip at the middle school that we're being particularly mindful of, and we'll look to make final decisions for both of them within the coming weeks, and we'll utilize all the guidance available to us to make sure we make the best possible choices. Why don't we continue? Ms. Stein, there are a couple other items that I thought?
Sure, the only other thing I guess I wanted, well, two things. One is kindergarten registration, you didn't mention that yet.
I didn't, no.
So, our district clerk here, Pauline, led kindergarten registration last week, she did a great job with that, along with my assistant, Dorine, and partially me there when I could, and we had about, I think it was 104 registrants already, so, that compared to about 99 last year at the same time, so we're basically at the same point, and we'll probably get another 25 to 30 as the year goes on now. So, it was a successful event, we had sessions in the morning, the afternoon, and evening to try to accommodate, you know, different, you know, parents' work and commitments, so that was very successful. And then, the other thing was, this past week, we changed our phone system, at least partially, so we did the first step, which was the office phones. We have some, you know, minor hiccups that we're working through, some programming changes, but for the most part, it went smoothly. Noracom had staff here on Monday to help all the office staff, you know, work through those issues and learn how to use the phones. We've had a couple things that we're still working on, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. We are no longer now relying on Windows 2000 technology for our voicemail, and we, hopefully the phones will be going out every five seconds with the battery backup issues we were having, so we're moving in the right direction here, and the next phase will be to replace the classroom phones, which we're working out the timetable for right now.
Great. And then, finally, Mary, do you want to talk about the Castle visit from Friday?
Sure, sure. So, last Friday, we hosted Ruth Cross from the Castle Organization to come and speak with members of our community about our social-emotional learning program, what currently exists and where we want to go. Okay, I want to thank my colleagues in the room, who all helped support that visit, as well as the board members who took time to come in and speak with Ruth. It was a very, very busy day, she basically had half-hour meetings with groups and was just running all over the district all day. She was pretty tired when I put her on the plane at the end of the day, but she was incredibly impressed with the welcome that everyone in the district gave her. She was really, really pleased with the candor, the openness that people provided in their answers to her questions, and she wanted me to particularly comment on the children. She was so happy to meet our students and to talk with them about their experiences in school. She was so impressed with how articulate they were and how readily they were really able to identify what social-emotional learning meant to them, what their experiences were in school, so she had a great day with us, which was lovely. In about four to six weeks, we can expect a report from her. She'll be giving us basically a status of the district in terms of where we stand now regarding social-emotional learning, as well as outlining next steps for us to strengthen that aspect of our program. So, again, thank you to everybody, I know that it was a little bit of a disruption to your instructional day, and I really appreciate the help.
Great, thank you, and thank you. So, that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, so, next, we have our committee reports. So, we have B and G, which, exactly, I'll start, and Carol will, of course, correct whatever I get wrong or don't include, but we're at the point now where we're starting to take shape the projects that will be done over the summer. So, at this point, that would be the work at Dow's Lane, including the bathroom, the parking lot there, the roof, and the boiler, so those projects are in various stages of getting ready to be submitted to S E D. for approval, and then, we're also working towards the enclosure of the campus, but that's middle, it's about another month away, so that still needs to be worked through, and then we'll need to figure out where our bids come in and how that work will get sequenced, so that's the other big piece. The replacement of the bleachers will probably commence at the end of football season in the fall, so that way, we can take advantage of the weather before it gets too cold to get foundations poured and things ready for the bleacher work to be done, and then that will finish up in the spring, and then we'll move into the outdoor learning pavilion work after that, since I think people call the goal is to work from the furthest away back towards the road on that site, so the hope would be by the time we get to the opening of school, not next year, but the year after that, that we'd be able to fully have that space ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the only thing I would add is that, once these projects are sent up to S E D., there's a, you know, fairly decent lead time to get approval. We are fast-tracking the ones where it makes sense to do that, which shortens the time to still four to six weeks, but even then, we go to bid or we use a state contract to purchase something, there's often a long lead time to purchase something, like, for example, the bleachers, we talked about trying to get that in first, but it's custom-made to your spec, so those are the kinds of things you just, you can't rush it, so, and we can't really purchase it now because we don't have the approval, so it's like a really kind of a Pandora's Box here. So, the timelines are what they are, but we are doing as much aggressive as possible with all the approvals that we can, and the architects are working, you know, to get all the designs. I'm looking at one of the things right now, and it's like 100 pages for one submission for the outdoor bathroom, so each one of these submissions takes a lot of paper, a lot of forms, so, it's complicated.
And the other thing that I also did mention is that the lighting replacement work is starting to get underway, and we'll start having, hopefully, some mock-ups in the coming weeks, so we can then have our professionals here look at it and decide which options we like best and start moving forward with that work as well.
And the only thing I would add to that, and maybe the opportunity to transition to the Communications Committee, is that in the coming weeks, we should be getting some fine-tuned details, and then in doing so, that'll enable the administration and the board to be able to communicate some more specific details and timelines to the broader community, and then to engage some of our immediate neighbors around some of the construction projects related to the details, so that should be forthcoming in a couple weeks.
Thank you. Communications, is there any update?
Well, we continue to discuss the development of the survey, and I should probably add that we met on the 26th of February, just as a matter of record, so that's kind of been an ongoing process, and we talked about the potential, so in addition to what's already been worked on with the committee on, so looking at the survey, to potentially include a, I guess, a piece that was provided by our survey company, K-12, on social-emotional learning versus using the Castle, so a comparable survey that Castle would provide, and what logistics it might take to include another section of our existing climate survey versus just doing that as a separate piece later on, so either, you know, at a future time that would not interrupt the schedule of conducting the existing climate survey, which we know tends to be on a tight timeline to get finished by the end of the school year. So, I think that generally, we all supported not delaying the current climate survey, but once the, so, once the report with Castle has been produced, and we have more of a sense of a timeline and some ongoing path forward, that that would be a good time to do any additional surveying of social-emotional learning. We also talked about, a little about the Voter Voice, the advocacy tool that West Putts providing, and the potential to, of what Chris talked about in his earlier, about the need for advocacy around funding for mental health, which was great to hear about, and a little bit of an update on continuing, Irvington's continuing work in enriching its social media for the community, so opportunities to reach both adults and kids, so the idea has been to work with an Instagram, but I'm not sure that we're quite there yet, that Chris is-
Yeah, we're close. We've, we had an Instagram account that I want to shout out to Mr. Stromwasser and our partners at Edgitech, that have been able to reacquire an account that we, to get our name back, so we are going to be setting up a process next couple weeks, we're going to be able to start to bring that to life and promote it, and when you think of our Facebook page and the website and the photos that we publish, that they're also going to be appearing on Instagram as well, to be able to engage a larger audience as more indicative.
Is the Castle survey part of the visit? Is this something that they require?
It was not part of the visit, the-
But for their final report, I should say.
Had been shared with them, but as part of the resources that they offer, they have a variety of surveys for adults, for children- a variety of surveys for adults, for children, that can, that we may want to look at moving forward. Okay.
And the, the final thing that I would say to, um, maybe supplement what more had said, um, one of the goals that the Communications Committee set this year was to dig a little bit deeper into the school quality survey results related to communication, um, as they pertain in particular to the board and to the district. Um, and we had flirted with a bunch of different ideas as far as hosting focus groups and other strategies, but after consulting a number of experts, we actually decided that we are adding a few additional questions related to communications to dig into more specifics of what community would like to see, how community accesses, um, the, the news from the school district, and what their top priorities are as far as accessing those different resources and looking at the, the large array of communication tools that we present in the Irvington District. So you'll see that as a supplement, um, in the, um, in the survey, which will be circulated with board and leadership tomorrow morning, because I just received it this evening. So we'll, should be, we'll be setting a timeline and launching the survey probably within the next two weeks.
Great, thank you. So I think, uh, with that, we have a opportunity for comments from members of the community. Seeing none, Dr. Harris and I turn back over to you for our presentation on the budgets.
So, good evening, everyone, and I want to thank, um, our colleagues, my colleagues that are here this evening, as I indicated, Mr. Samuelson and Mr. Hanson are off-roading on the girls' basketball team, and Dr. Cantor is home ill. Um, it sounds like she has something similar as I do, uh, but I excuse her for this evening. So tonight, uh, we're kind of taking up part two of this critical budget process. Uh, two weeks ago, we talked about, um, the operational side of the budget, and tonight we're going to begin to dig a little deeper into the curriculum instruction component, hence the reason, um, a number of the administrators are here tonight to be able to answer any questions, as well as to show their support for the work that we're doing. As we say each and every time, um, our work here is focused around our vision, and that vision and what it takes to always, always deliver the strongest possible school district. And that is focused on students, that is focused on school time experiences, maintaining our facilities, focusing on our fa- faculty, but of course maintaining the fiscal health of the school district while being mindful of a responsible tax rate. So that said, on all that we do, um, in this school district, um, and we start off each school year with a presentation of goals, and, um, we kind of wrap up a school year with a reflection on goals and the work that's happened in the school year, and in between there, um, we have this thorough budget process, and every step of the way, we step back and we kind of check what we do. We hold ourselves true to all the objectives that exist in the school district, and we align our efforts with the six strategic objectives that exist within the strategic plan. You will see them referenced throughout the presentation with, with each of the considerations that are presented, uh, this evening. So that said, um, here, kind of reiterating the points that I just made, that alignment exists and will be there, and even when we're faced with challenges, and sometimes we're not able to deliver on some of the initiatives because of what the finances simply are, um, that those topics will remain priorities for years to come, and we'll make sure we hold true to what we believe is a school district and be able to deliver upon those initiatives. So in our process, um, tonight, you can see where we stand, um, the curriculum and instruction budget. Um, on the 17th, you will have the superintendent's proposed budget, which will integrate feedback from not only this evening, but the meeting that occurred back on February 11th. And then on March 31st, there will be, um, one final round of feedback, uh, from the Board of Education, uh, some adjustments that we may make, and opportunities for the community to provide their thinking related to the school district budget, and then the board will seek to adopt that on the 14th, and then of course the all-important, uh, budget vote and trust the election on the 19th. Clearly, the board has some hefty responsibilities when it comes to this critical work, um, in seeking to identify what that budgetary ceiling is for the annual budget, and ensuring that we're maintaining that responsible growth that I referenced before, um, reflecting on the fund balance allocation each and every year to make sure that, again, there's responsible measures being taken there, and that regardless of what we do, we're setting the district up for a sustainable financial future. Um, and so those decisions are going to be before us, the, each of the next two meetings, and, um, I'm sure we'll engage in some great dialogue as we arrive at those points. So that said, we'll dig into the curriculum and instruction budget. So there's a number of different components that are contained within this aspect of the budget, and certainly not going to read to you, but really some of the highlights. And when we think of instruction, um, that's what's happening in the classroom, that's the personnel building instruction, the materials that support that, and it's also some of the related services that benefit our students and support their needs. It's our libraries and media centers, our guidance, um, services, instructional technology. If you recall, in the operations budget, we discussed, um, the operational side of technology, uh, so that is differentiated between the two components. Curriculum development, professional development, the supervision of instruction and the leadership of our schools and the district. We're also thinking about co-curricular and interscholastic athletics, special education and pupil personnel services. So when we step back and we reflect on those six important strategic objectives, you know, we could certainly find ways to connect all six of them within the work, um, that we're doing on this side of the budget, but really the first four will resonate the most strongly with each of us tonight, and you'll see them referenced throughout the presentation. Uh-oh. So we lost the graphic here. Uh, I'm not sure what happened, um, but you can see a lot of numbers out there. So frankly, we step back and we take a look at where the, the budget stands, uh, today, and we think about what ends up happening, is that realistically, nearly seventy percent of the budget, approximately fifty million dollars, is related to what happens in the curriculum instruction side, and Carol's showing proof that it really is there. And so, that said, so really the, the conversations tonight amount for what we do. It is the people business. It's the side of what we do, is delivering instruction and caring for kids. So every year, when we think about what's going to happen, even before we begin thinking about what those new initiatives, new considerations may be, there's going to be budget variances that happen. Um, that's kind of the most notable area of growth is going to be in salaries, so we're looking at contractual salaries of our employees, um, costs for, for related services for students with disabilities, and the support that we must provide, um, at John Cardinal O'Connor School, right down at the bottom of the hill. Um, changes in added district placements and tuitions for our students with special needs, um, equipment needs, uh, purchases that we must make, um, not only those that we think are enhancing programs, but just to replace items that are aging and beyond their useful life, that support our operation on a, on a daily, um, on a daily basis here. Um, we think about both these increases for which we have obligation, uh, as a constituent district, and then all the related benefits that the district has responsibility for, uh, for its employees. So last week, we talked about the fact that we're, we're in a good position in that we're able to talk about considerations, when there's been years where we have had challenges. If we look back approximately four years ago, trustees that are, were in the room then, and when we, I look out to the audience, my administrative colleagues that were here will remember that we actually had one year where we had tax cap growth of a negative thirty-seven thousand dollars. So when we step back and think about where we are today, um, you know, we've considered some, um, opportunities in the operations budget, and we have the opportunity to take a look at, um, some ways that benefit experiences for our students, uh, on the curriculum instruction side. The first really grows out of probably two years' worth of work, and we had a tremendous workshop, um, which everyone in the room was engaged, uh, just last week, where we focused on, in part, social worker and social work needs. This is an area, um, that I think every administrator in this room would stand up and give a dissertation on, um, the needs that are before us, and the, the shifts that really, um, have hit us in, um, American society globally, um, and to be able to make sure we're able to support our students and their critical needs, let alone the mandates that have come down from New York State, um, in looking to address the mental health regulations. Um, this has led us to request, um, for the second year, an additional social worker. As we outlined, um, at the last Board of Education meeting, we'd be hiring another social worker with one social worker, um, focusing specifically on the secondary schools, and the other social worker focusing on the elementary schools. When we look at the, the total cost of, uh, this, or we should say a net cost, we're looking at an increase of about a hundred-three thousand dollars to the budget. Um, the, the total cost is a hundred-twelve thousand dollars, but we have some offset, um, of eighty-seven hundred dollars from funds that had been in the budget associated with SEL from last year. It'll come up again, and I do want to note that, uh, we're looking at the eighty-seven hundred dollars offset from SEL, um, as referenced earlier in Ms. Ellis's report, when we're talking about the work from Castle, um, when we received that report and put together our, our stakeholder committee this spring to be able to inform our work and develop that multi-year action plan, not only do we have money embedded in professional development lines that will be able to support that work, but we are allocating an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to be able to support those initiatives. So that twenty-five thousand dollars, where that money, how that money will spent, be spent, will grow out of, uh, specifically the recommendations that come from the committee and how we look to implement those, um, actions over the coming years. The next is, um, elementary world language. Uh, this is year two in a two-year initiative, seeking to provide an early world language experience for K through five. Um, as the board shall remember, this year, we were able to implement, um, flex program, Spanish speaking, Spanish cultural opportunity, um, for our students in grades three through five. Um, this would be the second year of that initiative, um, where we'd be seeking to expand the program, K to two. If possible, um, the priority would be to look to identify, um, a teacher of French, so we can provide, um, a foundation for our students and experience in both French and Spanish, to be able to prepare them for their secondary, uh, studies, uh, and to have that all-important exposure. Uh, this is an addition that is a hundred-twelve thousand dollars, which is inclusive of the salary in that, it's, again, um, much like this slide earlier in the presentation, uh, it is holding true to the initiatives that we've set forth. Last year, it was a clear priority of the Board of Education to ensure that we implemented, uh, this initiative, so this would be year two and allow us to fully implement early world language in a flex program. So when we think about some considerations here, um, it's hard to see how some of them may align, um, in curriculum and instruction, uh, but they are important. And where on its face, um, this consideration, bless you, this ask, of an additional aid at Main Street School for the physical education program, on its face, it may look to safety and security. So we think of our gymnasium at Main Street School, which is a building that is separate and isolated from the main school building, and we have our wonderful teacher that's down there, working with our children throughout the day, but we have one adult with a group of children. And so if we were to think of there being a critical emergency, a, a health scare or a safety or security, um, implement, you know, protocol that we needed to implement, um, there would be concerns about one staff member being able to care for and support all of our children. Having talked about this for, for a couple of years, and stepping back and looking in, in the focus that we're placing on safety and security in our school district, this is really evolving to a place where it's essentially becoming non-negotiable, that we need to make sure, uh, I won't call out who that was, Ms. Ellis.
Do we have shoe holder here?
But, um, we see this as an opportunity to really provide for the safety and security of our students, but at the same time, we cannot overlook the opportunity that's going to come forth, that's going to be able to enhance the program by having another adult there supporting the delivery of our PE program. Uh, so it's some advisor stipends. Um, each year, we look to expand opportunities for our students, and some of these grow from interests that come forward from our students and the work that they've done and looking at their innovation and, um, really the sense of, of student agency that is really present in our schools, um, and others grow out of opportunities that we want to devise for our students. Um, so that said, um, we're putting, um, out a proposal for just over ten thousand dollars that would be looking to add, um, two addition, additional advisor opportunities for our students to have enriched experiences, and some examples, um, here, and while I, I do know that these will be ultimately determined, because we know, as we've talked about in the budget process before, clubs vary from year to year, right? The opportunities are based upon student interest, staff interest, uh, but here we see opportunities that may potentially support two key areas, one being robotics, which has grown through student interest, where students have actually written grants, innovation grants, um, that have supported their work. Uh, just last week, when we were preparing for our board meeting, I was down the hall with a group of students that were constructing their robot that's going to be heading off to competitions. Uh, this has really grown in, and it's not only something that we have a large number of students engaged in, but we, and when we think of the, the, the impact of our STEM program and the work that's happening with our computer sciences across the district, um, this, there's direct linkage to that work. When we think about programming, when we think about architecture, when we think about engineering, and it's also engaging both male and female students, which is really exciting. Uh, so it's support that. Uh, one thing that when we talk about the Irvington School District, and one of the many, many things that we can be proud of when we go elsewhere, and, you know, I see myself sitting at conferences around the region or across the country, and you're engaging with colleagues about what's unique about your school district, and we have those proud moments, we can step back and brag, there's so many things that we can be proud of here in Irvington. One thing that is unique is that we have so many students that graduate that are truly proficient in two languages. So when we think about the number of students that study two languages, we think about students that come to the table that are native speakers, um, in, in another language. So here, we're actually, I, I'm saying two languages, but we're really celebrating students that are fluent in three languages, um, so beyond English. Um, so we wanted to look to implement a seal of bilinguals program, where our students would actually graduate with recognition for being fluent in multiple languages. Um, so there would be a program that would be implemented here at the high school, under the leadership of Ms. GM, Mr. Samuelson, and in our world language department, where our students would be able to earn another credential that, that would recognize their accomplishments in the study of world languages, and really would take that level of success with them off to college. Uh, so we see this as a tremendous value add for only a few thousand dollars. Another area that may seem a little different, but it does relate to the athletics program. Uh, when we think about additional supplies as, or equipment as it relates to our athletics program, our scoreboard in the campus gym is at the end of its useful life. We've had a, a number of emergency repairs, whether we've had outside contractors here fixing it, or our own maintenance mechanics that have been making last-minute repairs that get scoreboards and shot clocks working. We're at a place where it needs to be replaced. Um, it's, um, an expensive piece of equipment, this thirty thousand dollars, which would replace the scoreboards at either end of the gymnasium and both of the shot clocks that sit atop, uh, the backboards. Um, it is a necessary step that we have to take, because we were told the equipment that we have is on its last legs. Additional coaching stipends. Uh, each year, uh, we do, complete an inventory of, or, uh, survey of participation interest for our students. So we look at students that will be able to participate in not only modified, but all high school sports. Um, there's a survey that is administered by our athletic director and supported by our secondary school administration, and in doing so, we try to get a sense of what our student participation will look like to be able to inform, uh, our staffing needs for next year. So right now, um, based upon the data that we have available to us, and I would say that we look at this data in two different lenses. One, we look at the, um, survey responses, where we have students that are expressing interest for the upcoming school year, and then we also go back and do a three-year trend analysis of the enrollment, uh, of the actual real-like, real-time participation in each of those sports, to have that trend, and then compare it to where the, um, you know, anticipated, uh, participation data will fall. Based upon this, we see, um, a need to, um, potentially, um, increase two different sports, um, and possibly even a third based upon interest. Um, so here, we're looking at, um, JV wrestling. We have a large number of wrestlers, um, and we, only having a varsity program right now, we have a number of student athletes that are not able to compete. Um, so we'd be looking at having a JV wrestling program, which would be a new addition. Um, also, and much credit to our tremendous field hockey coach, um, a program that was all but ready to close up shop a few years- but ready to close up shop a few years ago. Not only do we now have a strong varsity program, but we will have enough players for a JV squad. So that is a budgetary line that we've been carrying forward but not filling for the last couple of years. So we're optimistic that we'll be adding that. And there's always a prospect of some other areas that we'll have some attention, one of them potentially being looking at swimming, that our mergers that we have for our swim teams, there's a lot of participants, a lot more swimmers than the past. So we may be looking to subdivide some of those mergers down the road, but as more information is available, that'll be shared with the Board. And if there are any budgetary impacts, we'll be sure to integrate that as appropriate.
And that's the boys' swimming team, correct?
Boys' swimming, yes. So one thing that we looked at this year and want to formalize in a recommendation is to have a K-12 chairperson of PE and Health. So this would be a teacher that is, has release time 1.1 FTE. So generally speaking, you would think of a teacher having five primary responsibilities throughout the course of a day. So this is a teacher that would be freed up one portion of their day to be able to provide leadership for the other teachers in the area of PE and Health. They'd also facilitate regular department meetings. Not only do I think this is a great opportunity to have consistency and structure, to be able to support the development of our programs, to be able to provide another layer of support for our teachers, but it is that opportunity for us to be able to grow in other areas and looking at providing space for teacher leaders to be able to develop and hone their skills, to be able to develop into future leaders, potential school-level leaders and so on in Irvington schools. So that said, now we come down to some of the summary slides, and we'll move them rather quickly unless there's any questions that the Board wants to flag as we move along. So the proposed curriculum development and supervision budget, as you can see, there aren't many significant variances here. There are some cost reductions that you can see, tri-state consortium, we had a tri-state visit this year, so there's costs associated with facilitating that that are no longer there. The other expenses are really just push-ahead variances as outlined earlier in the presentation.
I will also just add that there is a backup document to this that's in the back and will also be posted on the budget side of the website, which gives more detail in some of the categories. It gives you the push-ahead, it gives you the new pieces all put together. So it doesn't lend itself to putting that information up on a slide, nobody could read it, but it's there for your, for your...
And for the community's.
Your review.
The community, make sure they know.
Thank you.
They ask every year.
So when we sit back, and I'll have Mary jump in here because she's been doing a lot of work with our administrative colleagues as it relates to curriculum and professional development.
Okay, thank you. So clearly, instruction, what happens in classrooms is at the heart of what we do. And ensuring that our teachers have everything they need in order to do that at a high level is one of the main goals of our professional development program. So in my, I think I'm in my ninth week now, I've been looking closely at what's already in place, seeing what the multi-year plans for professional development are, working with my colleagues who are in the buildings for, to better understand the priorities and where they are in meeting those. So some of the current professional development programs that are already included in the budget are looking at ELA to ensure we have vertical alignment of skills and content, which would also include writing, which I know is something we've talked about. In math, we're looking at developing strong interventions and providing support for some of our new teachers who may come in and not be as familiar with our math program. Social studies, tremendous amount of work has gone on there to align to the New York State learning standards. Similarly, with science, standards underwent major revisions several years ago, and we're looking at changes in assessments. We've had Helen Paschley, one of the leaders in New York State Science, working with our teachers and ensuring that our programs and our instruction are aligned with those new standards. World Language has been working, they are in year five of a process of developing a very, very rich world language program that focuses on actual experiences with language as opposed to more dry, isolated kinds of things. They've been working a lot on reading and speaking, and we'll be moving, looking at more strongly into writing next year. In music, we've also had new learning standards implemented, and our music teachers have been working with a consultant to ensure that their instruction is aligned with that as well. So our total budget in the area of professional development is $250,000. We do receive title grants that allow us to fund much of the professional development. Title II helps us with ELA and math, and Title IV addresses teachers proficiency in science. So we use approximately $40,000 of title funds to offset that. We also get Bosie's aid back. We book many of our consultants through Bosie's, becomes aidable, so that money comes back to us. So our net cost for that comes out to $100,000.
And I'll just highlight, so when we think about that expenditure of $250,000, we do need to draw attention to that net cost because of the nature of how we are able to do business. It's a tremendous value here in thinking that, you know, maybe you say that the price tag is $250,000, but really, the bottom line for our budget is the $100,000 because how we utilize the resources that are available to us as a school district.
So in addition to the professional development, curriculum work is also a very important part of the work that our teachers do. We're looking at both a summer institute for our world language teachers, and we anticipate having several new members of that department. It will be extremely important for them to participate in that institute and become familiar with our world language program. As we've already talked about through our visit with Castle, we're looking at putting resources into looking at developing a very, very strong district-wide social emotional learning program. We will be looking at K-12 writing at the curriculum. We are also looking at Project Lead the Way, vertical alignment, and what has been a focus of the district in looking at developing curriculum. We now have very robust curriculum maps for all of our courses, and our next step is to look at those maps and consider how we're going to look at the assessments that are built within those units and ensure that we develop a balanced assessment program across the district. And our total budget for that curriculum development work is $77,500. I just want to note that the things that are noted here are based on the currently identified areas of focus. I will be working with the professional development committee to survey the teachers. We'll be working with the administrators as well to ensure that these still continue to meet the needs of the district.
So when we look at general education instruction, you can see there's a number of key variances that are highlighted here. So when we step back and look at them, this integrates three of the considerations that I presented before, the elementary world language teacher, additional aid for PE, and the PE program chair position. So of note, you'll see on the left-hand side, some adjustments that Carol has done some recoding. So you'll see some adjustments that will be more clearly reflected on the backup sheets that she referenced before. So library guidance, there are no new considerations, we're just looking for variances. And the adjustments reflect that we see here, and some negative variance is just reflecting what's anticipated dollars to next year. So instructional technology budget, you can see both of it made up through some salaries. But of course, we have a regular commitment, and this is something we've built up over the years, seeking to build regular consistent line items to be able to support our investment in technology. So in doing so here, you can see the variances that are there. All of the initiatives that we're handling are through what is a push-ahead budget. So we're not labeling new asks here. We've defined a budgetary amount that we've been maintaining from year to year based upon not only muddies that have been available, but expiring lease payments, when the district used the leased technology and now purchasing it instead. So we kind of roll that money, lease payments, into this line each year. So this would speak to the variety of technologies that we are purchasing in the school district. Carol? So when we think about this variance here, what does it include? So we're looking at $257,000, that would equate to Chromebooks, classroom displays, printer, projector, monitor replacements, and one Chromebook for one new grade. So when we think about one new grade, we're looking at currently in middle school, six through eight, where each student has a Chromebook. The anticipation was that our eighth graders then would take the devices with them to high school, and we'd buy another set for our sixth graders. A set of Chromebooks is approximately $37,000. So that would be built into this push-ahead figure. We have annual fees and supplies related to PLTW that fall in this category, additional computer supplies, instructional software purchases, licenses and the like, and other contractual support, which would be Editex support, printer management, and other data services that we contract with on an annual basis. So a little bit of an overview of the district's journey from a technology standpoint from 2013, 14, all the way forward to today, and looking at the focus in the area of technology and the purchases that we've made. As you can imagine, on the backside of this, there is a comprehensive replenishment schedule that's maintained by J and Editex to identify where the areas that needs are, looking at computers at their end of their life, smart boards at the end of their life, projectors, monitors, so on and so forth. So when you look at these investments, they're looking to address that on an annual basis. This year, we've made a shift from looking to purchase smart boards all the time to actually purchasing, once we purchased a new line board, which is a flat panel LED monitor that enables much more flexibility in its use in the classroom, and they've really been well-received. We've highlighted a number of different models across the district, and you can see this year, we've purchased 25 of them that have been rolled out across the district, and they've been really great additions to the instruction.
Can we interrupt this program to let you know that Irvington is winning 13 to 4 after the first quarter?[1349.16][1349.18][laughter] Leading to the athletics.
As we pivot to athletics.
That's helpful.
Well done, Carol. So really, the variances here that you see, aside from the typical salary push-ahead, is looking at the additional advisor and coach stipends that I referenced earlier in the purchase of campus gym school. Special education is an area where it certainly is challenging, looking at the level of growth that we see from year to year. We know when we see salaries, we're thinking of district personnel that are providing or overseeing experiences for our students and seeing that variance, which speaks for itself. But when we think of tuitions and seeing that growth, it's the students that are educated outside of our school district and the anticipated growth in the tuitions from year to year. So just a little bit of data of looking at additional placements and how they break out from the last couple of years, and we're anticipating our numbers falling, and looking at some of the shifts that have occurred and see some up and down. There's real variance here that happens. I could say, and when I looked at Gail, we had in the last couple of weeks, a few students that have moved out, our families have told us that they're going to be moving. And just as quickly, you have families that move into districts, who students will require additional services that may fall into these categories. So there's an area that we are certainly in flux on a pretty regular basis based upon, you know, the identification of new student needs or students coming and going from this school district. One thing that I do want to note is which the statement that is underlined and bolded at the bottom of the screen, that when we think of additional placements and changes, one of the challenges that you have with a budget process and looking at where your CSE, annual evaluation process falls in annual meetings, is that that happens typically later in the school year. So there's program developments and ideas that we're generating and developing here that may yet be reflected in the budget because we haven't determined final needs for students moving to next school year. As you may or may not know, when we go into a CSE process, it is a collaborative process with the team of educators and related service providers in the school district and the family, and those outcomes aren't predetermined. Decisions are made at the table in collaboration with the family and consultation with all the experts involved. So there's lots of moving pieces here. We try to plan responsibly to be able to provide for what we think are some possibilities that can come up down the road, but there's always some shifts and adjustments that have to be made as we move through the spring.
The only other thing I'll point out here is that there is a proposal at the state, with the state governor's budget, that says that we would end up having to pay a larger share for any student in a residential placement, and that would put us at risk, and that is not budgeted in this budget so far. I don't think it'll get through. It's a very tough one. It would increase from 38 to like 58% of our share, so that is huge. So I don't think it's going to happen, but it is a risk, so we're going to keep our eye on that one.
Did you say 38 to 58?
Currently, it's a 38% share right now that the county pays, and we get billed for a portion of that, but the, it would be 50-something percent.
Okay.
Exact number, I'll have to look up, but...
Thank you.
So pupil personnel services. The only shift that we see here besides push-ahead would be the addition of the social worker, which we've spoken extensively about. So the proposed benefits budget, so here, we're looking at the variances as it relates to retirement. So the respective retirement funds, ERS, TRS, social security expenditures the district or obligations the district has to make, health insurance, other insurances, union welfare contracts, and contractual benefits. So we are seeing a shift here that does certainly appear sizable. What we would note here is down in the key variances on the left is looking at the 7% increase in the TRS contribution rate, 3.7% increase in health insurance. But I would also say that 3.7% is about half of what the market average is, so we're in really good shape there. So thank goodness, health insurance is performing well in light of the large increase on the TRS side. And then workers' comp, there's increases there that are necessary to budget to be able to pay old claims or tail claims, as they're referred to, as the district has transitioned to, from being a self-funded to entering a consortium for workers' comp insurance. So when we look at the overall summary, we can certainly look at a little history from the 1920 approved budget, all the way to where we are today and with what has been proposed thus far on curriculum and instruction side and seeing the overall variance that is present in certainly those categories, some of them, we can see negatives and some of them large based upon the increases. That 17% looks huge when you look at the co-curriculum, but then at the end of the day, you have to look all the way to the left and see that we're starting on the base of, you know, that was, you know, $163,000 for the approved budget, but in some, looking at the variance for this section being 2.6%. So again, a recap of all the proposals. Certainly, you saw the connection where they are aligned with all strategic objectives. We're trying to create opportunities for all our students across the school leadership. We're looking at maintaining and continuing to enhance existing programs. We're not looking at cuts to any of the programs that we value and certainly look forward to our children joining us today. There's a strong commitment, as Mary outlined, to ongoing professional development and the great partnership and the new lens that she's looking at that with, with not only the administrative team, but with the professional development committee. Increased social emotional learning support for our students on two different facets. One, approach to our work growing out of the Castle visit from last week, as well as the support that would be provided through an additional social worker. Again, increasing enrichment programs, as outlined before, some of the requests pertaining to the high school program. And that bottom line, that these are under consideration until we really, the Board adopts the budget in mid-April. So this is one overview slide, so we're looking at these categories, some of our spaces got lost again here somehow. A total of new considerations being $338,000 if they're pertaining to curriculum and And then a summary by category to see where... And then a summary by category to see where some of the variances are, and then the percentage of the budget, that one slide that was lost in the very beginning of the presentation, the percentage of the budget that these particular areas could show. So when looking at our projected tax levy cap, starts to become magic when Carol runs the formula, and looking at where everything stands. So, you know, it's beginning with looking at the prior year's tax levy, looking at the local growth factor, which we're fortunate was healthy this year at that 0.018% increase there. So you're adjusting the tax levy, looking at any exemptions that may come into play, and then looking at CPI and the increase, so rather than having the full 2%, we have a 0.1081%, which as we go all the way through and do the math, you can see the allowable increase within the tax gap is 3.77%, with net increase of being just over $2.1 million.
And just for, again, for adification, exemptions reflects capital debt that the voters have already approved, so minus your building aid, so any money that you would have already gotten back. So that's what reflects an exemption. This year, they did add BOSIs, so we had to compute it again with a different number. So we took a portion of the BOSIs capital, less the policy aid, so that was an addition. It's small numbers for us, but some districts, it might be larger.
And finally, some of the slides that we traditionally have to wrap up and looking at projections of revenue, similar to what we saw last presentation two weeks back, and looking at the increases in revenue. State aid increases as well as local property taxes, you can see some decrease in tuition as students have aged out of programs, and their needs were different than what we're able to provide here in Irvington, or some general education students that may have been attending and that are no longer on the rolls here in our schools. So you can see that increase reference before, 3.7%.
The one bright spot here is that sales tax revenue is going up, and that is because they changed the amount, and the amount that's being distributed to schools is a benefit from that, so that's fortunately offsetting some of the other negative spots.
And when we look at a number of 257, that consumes about two-thirds of the total considerations for the curriculum and instruction side of the budget. So you can see the impact and kind of the same grace that has been had there. As the state finalizes the budget for the next fiscal year, there may be some shifts that occur, but the district, like Irvington, when it's absolute and successful, it's not likely that we will see much increase in state aid, if any. And our hope here really has to be that we don't see those other areas of challenges surfaced that Carol and I had mentioned throughout the presentation. And then finally, that combined revenue and expenditure chart, simply showing you how everything adds up at the end of the day. Looking at our estimated budget revenue, $65,283,282 right now, and you can see we're a little bit over. You know, we always have some fine tuning that we have to do after the board's feedback, but we get to a place where we're close, and then we do some tweaks and we go through and scrutinize, further scrutinize some particular line items and seeking to balance the budget. With the work that we've done to date in the district office and with our administrative colleagues, we have essentially a balanced budget and have to pick up another $29,000 following the feedback that we received from the Board of Education this evening. Just some of the trends and looking at where we've been over past years, and, you know, certainly a reminder, in '17, '18 is when we went to the full evaluation with the most recent assessment and seeing the trends over time. So we're looking for some budget increase this year being the 3.75%, and the tax rate increase being just north of 2%.
And again, that's clearly an estimated number based on the assessed valuation, the most current number I have from the assessor's office in Greenberg.
So finally, looking at where we are, looking forward next steps. Conversation that will occur this evening, of course, proposed budget that will occur in two weeks, the 31st, another discussion related to the budget and any provisions that then would be reflected on April 14th, when the board would adopt the budget. There would be a hearing on May 5th, then of course, the vote on May 19th. As always, we've scheduled a number of community forums to engage our community. We'll, Carol and I will be attending the DTSA general membership meeting. We'll have a couple of forums that'll happen in the evenings throughout this school community. We'll also meet with the preschool community, present to seniors, and the town or village trustees.
25 to 26.
25 to 26.
That's some good defense.
Now I'm going to have to try to figure out how I go to the IAF gala and the basketball game on Saturday.
Still have basketball to be played, so.
You're not kidding.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. I guess now it's time for our turn to talk, so I'll look down the table and if someone wants to start off, they have questions.
First off, obviously, thanks to everyone for the Herculean effort that goes into this, and especially Carol, because I know how much work is involved, and for your precision. I'm always impressed by that. So I guess one overall question that I think we've talked about in the past was just looking, and we had seen something at the beginning of the year. We had a headcount chart that showed, I think, headcount over the last few years, and I was curious if we could see something updated that would show with these budget requests, sort of where our headcount would be for 2021, or FTEs, whatever we have already that exists, whether it's FTEs or headcount, whatever's easier to put together. I think it exists. With the change, yeah, and if we could see the trend. So looking at the last few years, so we could sort of see where we were and where we're going. I just think that's always helpful to understand the magnitude of what we're approving.
That's a good question. And just as a reminder for everybody that it was in November, we had, I'm sorry.
Bless you.
Adopted essentially like a control roster of all FTEs in the district, full-time equivalents. And moving forward in the future, it'll be an annual action of the Board of Education in October. So what Erin's requesting, if any members of the public are interested, you can see what was adopted in November as a point of reference.
Thank you. And I focused on the backup document, so I apologize to the community if everyone doesn't have that handy, but, so a couple of questions that I had. I noticed that we had a significant percentage increase in substitute costs that I believe is based on our actual trend for this year, so I was curious if we knew what was driving that. Did we have increased leaves or excessive colds?
So one of the problems with substitutes is getting substitutes. It's very challenging to have enough people in the buildings to cover the needs. What ends up happening, particularly at the secondary level, is when a substitute is not available, teachers will be asked to cover other classes, and they are paid for those coverages at a higher rate than a substitute would be.
Okay.
So we hope to increase the amount of substitutes. We're also looking very closely at the amount of time that teachers are pulled from instruction and seeing if we can find ways to lower that, which will also help lower our subcosts.
That's great. That sort of asks my next question about why, when we pull teachers out of classes, and why and how frequently, and things like that. So then those overages that we're paying to teachers are showing up in the substitute line. Is that what I'm hearing? Thank you. That was great. Textbooks, we have an increase in textbook purchases, and I guess just in light of the wonderful workshop we had last week, I was curious if we're going to go through that process first, and the curriculum committee is going to have the opportunity to put together what our requirements are before we make any of these purchases. And it would also be helpful then to have an understanding maybe of what is just what the current thought process is about any of the currently requested curriculum.
Sure. So to clarify, the textbook line is used for a number of things, and it doesn't necessarily reflect new textbooks.
Okay.
Some of that line is used to replace existing textbooks, just through wear and tear, you know, we need to replace. The other thing the textbook line is used for is consumable workbooks. So our math workbooks, the science notebooks that go with Amplify, we have the opportunity to fund those through a textbook line. So even though it's called textbooks, it's not all textbooks.
Erin, we actually have a decrease in textbooks this year.
Do we? Why did I think I saw an increase?
About 23,000. Because last year, we had money allocated for sixth grade, I think it was the sixth grade books, and we're not doing that this year, so that number came down this year. So part of the whole exercise with push ahead is we don't exactly take all the numbers and just say, oh, it's the same as last year. If we know something isn't reoccurring, we pull that out when we do our push ahead. So I think that number, there is some movement that I put into supplies, because as Mary just said, some of the things are being purchased via, you know, actually, there's actually some things being purchased via BOSIs when we reproduce, you know, consumables or some other things that are considered instructional supplies instead of textbooks. So there is a little bit of a movement there between the two.
And I might have been looking at the wrong line, since I have no depth perception, so thanks for.
You're welcome. Can I just ask a follow-up question? Supplies, the difference between supplies and textbooks? So for example, the supply kits that we buy for Amplify would be under supplies, not textbooks, right?
Yeah, the state is pretty clear on that. And then there's like, any type of miniature, things like that, does it all have to be in?
In supplies, okay.
So in terms of Amplify, the actual kit that the teachers use for instruction would be under the supply line, the student notebooks would be under the textbook line?
Like all those K through five math bundles?
Right.
That we create every year, right? Those, that's part of the textbook.
But a workbook, like something that you write in and you end up having, that is considered still a textbook.
Even though it is a consumable and needs to be replaced.
And one of the beauties of that, too, is that we do that as a service through BOSIs. So anytime you do it through BOSIs. The textbooks we do.
Some are, some aren't.
So the math ones we do.
Bear with me while I just flip through when I was, can we talk a little bit more in depth about the special ed costs and increases? Are we allowed to talk about, no?
We're allowed to talk about anything we want.
Yep. Okay. Or maybe, I'm on the wrong page right now. In general, it's a half a million dollars, it's a 5% increase. I know a lot of it's from salaries, just 10% seems like a higher salary increase then.
So there was one salary that Dr. Harrison mentioned when we were talking about 2110 that I found was in the wrong code, so that I took out of one and moved it to the other. I did note that on the bottom here, that it was one FTE that was recoded from 2110. Somehow, you know, when we move people's codes around, I must have made a mistake a couple of years ago, and I didn't, I just happened to see it this year.
Okay, that's fine. That's perfect. Sorry, not to call that out.
All the S of reporting, I've been really attuned to every last little number lately, so I saw that.
The attention to detail is awesome, Carol, so let's, and then for workers' comp, is that just residual claims coming through from when we were self-insured?
Yes.
Okay.
So as an administrative issue, all of my questions relate to pages 22 and 23, the presentation about this expansion of one-to-one outside of the middle school, and I was asked to hold that to the end of our questions.
Yeah, we can just, we'll stick with anything with budget questions first.
So other than that, I honestly have no questions.
I do have one other. Sorry. I'm sorry. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about world language. So I just wanted, I know last year, the committee worked really hard to put together the recommendation for a flex program, so I understand that the way we're evaluating it is based on that recommendation. I'm curious, since the community, I believe, echoed their sentiment for wanting a FLEX program with an S, not an X, if we're going to revisit that recommendation at all as well in light of where we are with the FLEX program, and I know it's early and really hard probably to evaluate four months in, but I just want to throw that question out there, if that's, I know you're here nine weeks, Mary, but.
So our initiative at this point is to follow through with the recommendations that the board as a whole supported, or as an entity supported last year, which was the recommendation of the world language committee for a FLEX program.
With an X.
With an X, yeah.
Because they sound so similar, so I just want to make sure.
We're allowed to experience.
So I think our effort has to be to build and solidify that program, and if there's to be consideration in future years, we look at that as well. But we also think of a model when we're moving from FLEX with an X to FLEX with an S, we're also looking at increased time demands, and that really becomes a concern for what happens in the classroom. And when we look at our responsibility to teach so many other things, but aside from the core, stepping back and being, you know, we think of PLTW, which we've committed to, we think of, which is, we have to say is delivered kind of in a FLEX with an X model, right? But then all the work that we want to do and that we're committed to doing as a school district related to SEL, how do we be able to fit it all into a given school day? So I think we have to be true to what the recommendation was, what the Board of Education submitted, build that program if an opportunity presents itself to give it another look, let's do that. But right now, let's get this experience in the door and provide these experiences for all of our kids now, K through 12. It'll be exciting to be able to say in a year, right? Like last year, a year ago, we were saying, look at this, we're one of the few districts in the area that has a true K-12 STEM continuum, and now we'll be able to turn and say, we're one of a handful of districts in the region that have a K-12 world language continuum.
No one's happier than me about that, Chris.
Be back on the world language question, please. If I jump ahead for a second.
Kind of, yeah, but okay. Well, because I wanted to do the same thing. We were going in order. Well, we were going in order, so, but if you want, you go ahead.
I'm just, I only have one question, if you please.
I don't have a choice, apparently.
Thank you. So with the French, with the French Flex teacher addition, what does the, what does the elementary school look like? It's still a single period out of the week? It's a single special, but it just goes down to K-2? Is that, I just want to confirm.
Similar model, it'd be delivered like in a special rotation.
So kids who are now seeing a Spanish teacher weekly would alternate between a Spanish and a French?
That would, that would be the, that would essentially be the intent, yes. So you would look at a cycle of French, and I don't want to speak before we arrive in that position of hiring somebody, but that idea, you would see a cycle of French throughout the course of the year, and a cycle of Spanish throughout the course of the year.
But isn't that what we, what the recommendation was a year ago?
Correct.
Okay.
I needed to, I was trying to refresh and make sure that in this conversation we have some of that. Thank you. David, for your patience? That's all I wanted to ask. Dave?
I have a bunch of questions slash just thoughts, feedback from that perspective. Around the EWL, you know, just sort of thinking about it a lot, and I have personal experience with it this year, it's been terrific and so on, and, you know, it's really reflective of what the community wants, and it's really great. And so I just was gifted thinking as we have a new ASI, you know, sitting here and thinking about professional development, as we talked a lot about through the piece, and I know that it's, you know, it's a special, and I know that, I know what it is, right? But there are, I would love to have the administration think about the opportunities, and I think you mentioned some of this last year, just wanted to bring it back up, you know, having those folks during these professional development opportunities work with real-world language people up at the high school maybe, or collaborate with them somehow, just to see, you know, sort of that idea of creating the funnel from K through 12.
Right.
Around world language, and I know that we're in the very infant stages, but when you, and I know, as I'll get to in a few minutes with some feedback, when we talk about the professional development plan that's coming down the pipe, it would be interesting to see it reflected there, just so that you see the coherence. But the second piece is, I scratched that because you answered the question. Scratch that one. The scoreboard, you know, my feedback there is, I'd love to dig a little bit more into, and I know I sit on this committee, but I talked to the Booster Club or something like that, I know, I'm sure you did.
They don't have $31,000.
Yeah, I know, but I feel like, maybe I watch too much television, or too many movies, you know, made for TV movies for kids about schools, where they have these amazing scoreboards that were funded by something. But I feel, I don't know, it's just something to think about, ways, maybe being creative, but maybe you have already, and there's that.
Technically are permitted to place advertisements on them, but that would truly be something that board would have to consider.
Yeah, that's like a branding issue, you really want to go there.
I just feel like $30,000 is why we do need a scoreboard personally, and I'm speaking to the rest of the board more.
That would be something that.
I would say to give some historic perspective on that, there was some point many years ago, I don't remember when, where there was talk of either Coke or Pepsi sponsoring the football scoreboard, and that was met with much consternation in the community, so.
I wonder if it was framed that the money being spent would be going back to classrooms, right? So the $30,000 could be going into classrooms, could be going into classroom libraries, as I know, which I'll talk about in a minute, but anyway, just a thought, more than anything. No question there, concern or anything like that, just putting it out for discussion. So I really, the big piece that I wanted to talk about, two big pieces, one was the coach stipends and the allocations for sports, modified sports, the coaches, right? So I would personally like to see a real articulation of sports as they pertain to the, the kids and families. In other words, kids from modified, working their way towards JV, if that's where they want to go, working their way towards varsity and creating a real pipeline. You know, the coaches, and I understand this problem. I do very much so, that coaches are a stipended position at, at the modified level, right? It's not a coach, it's not, it's not a full-time job, right? So bringing in a coach with the great experience. I, I just know that, you know, a baseball coach should be a baseball coach, should be a baseball coach, basketball coach should be a basketball coach, and where they should collaborate. And I, I really would love to see some kind of like plan for how, how the sports program on a whole really works, right? Like, I'm not talking about winning or losing or championships or anything like that.
Dave, you just, sorry, I'm going to cut you off and jump in only because I think, as you know, we talked about having a larger discussion around athletics and we're hoping.
I didn't know that we were going to have a larger discussion around athletics, but that sounds good.
And that should be on the thirty-first.
Then that's, then that's perfect. Fantastic. Then we'll, how's that till there? But I think that's a really important mark because, anyway. Wanted to talk about professional development. Just say I'm very excited to see the professional development plan and see how this, all of these things line up in that document. And then one last piece was, and I have to say this, I, you know, it's just the balanced assessment program. It's been a while. So I, you know, in terms of whatever rests on that balanced assessment program, it's been, we've been talking about this balanced assessment program going on. This is my fifth year on the board. So I, I personally, personally, and I can't speak for anybody else on the board, but have real expectations, concrete expectations. And, and everything that goes along with that stuff, especially as it pertains to the four thousand series of grading policy stuff that we have yet to really think about. And, you know, really digging into that in a very substantial way.
I know I waved my, but I do have one thing to say that's on a different topic, if you're done. So I just wanted to go to slide thirteen or page thirteen that talks about the advisors. And sort of in the same way that David had spoken about this in the context of coaches and stipends, I don't know if this is possible anytime during this budget season. I think it could certainly wait until after. But I believe that last year we talked a little bit about having a better understanding of sort of schema of all the different advisor and club stipends and the process by which the levels are determined. There are different numbers or codes. And I would just ask, I mean, certainly the request is described in the budget as something that I don't have any concerns about, but that perhaps at some point the board could be provided with more of an understanding of the full structure and the costs at this time. But certainly not when we're in the middle of, you know, other priorities.
Yeah, so there, I know that the board posed a number of questions that came today that the vast majority have been answered and forwarded to board leadership this evening. Related to that was a question kind of getting at what you were talking about.
That's great. That's true.
But what I, I've just made note of that also related to this, and I don't know if it was last year or the year before we shared with the board, is that we actually have a club handbook that lists all the clubs and all the roles and what the descriptions of the clubs are. So that will provide context to that overall listing that the board has requested.
Okay, thank you so much.
I don't know if this is something that would come up in, it's just related to sort of the bigger picture as far as coaching goes. But these coaching positions, how do they kind of add to the total headcount of folks who are, who are in these positions? So what's the, we talked about some additions to, post additions to modified sports. So where would, where does this get us to as far as a total, if this were approved or the additional stipends?
I, I don't have the, so you're looking at the overall, the, the size of our coaching staff, I would say, by position and season.
Interested in kind of.
So which are, you're saying?
A kind of an overall number, yeah, and where, where this gets us to.
Yeah, I think in, in some ways it's related to Beth's request before.
It is. Inspired by.
So we could, it could probably be one document, one that's differentiated by clubs, advisors, coaches.
That'd be very helpful. I had a hard time visualizing it as well.
Oh, yeah?
I'm not.
I'm sorry, you were done?
Um, just a, a couple of other questions. So for the, could, on the Main Street School aid, could we please be reminded of how many classes do gym in a Main Street School gym class? I know that it may be different. Is it different?
Yeah, twenty-six, twenty-six classes a week.
Okay, twenty-six classes and so there, and there's just a single, there's a single PE teacher with them through all of that?
Correct.
To clarify, one class at a time?
One class at a time, but throughout the course of the week. So. Four, four days a week, there's five sections. And one day a week, there's six sections. So there's twenty-six total sections of classes that would meet for PE.
And what makes it different than having a single teacher in a class? So I, I think as, as you were speaking, Chris, about this, this item, you mentioned that, you mentioned, so safety and security. The difference in this case is just that the PE teacher is alone in the building as opposed to a situation where a teacher.
In a separate building.
In a separate, alone in a separate building as opposed to with other teachers around, because other teachers are handling their classes without aides.
Correct. So, yeah, so, and, and, and I'm glad you asked the question because I'm able to respond in a different way than when I presented before. So when I presented before, I focused solely about the isolation of the teacher, in this case, Ms. Shaw being in a separate building away from everybody else and having to manage students or program and deal with, respond to any emergencies by herself. But what's different than we look at teachers at Dow's Lane, the bulk of our teachers on the campus, not only are they in the main school buildings essentially, but oftentimes the teachers are team teaching and there's other PE teachers around. So where I may be with my group of twenty, twenty-five students, on the other side of the gym, on the other side of the field, there's another teacher with another group of students. So if there was an emergency, there is another adult to support me on top of the fact that I'm in the main school building. So I, I'm glad you asked the question because it brought up that team teaching component or the, you know, two classes happening concurrently in the same space, which I didn't reference before.
And I would imagine, judging from the safety, the safety reports that I've seen, that injuries do have a tendency to happen if they're going to happen in school and gym class. So.
Gym in recess are top two.
Exactly. So thank you for, thank you for clarifying. Hang on just one second because I made a list and I want to make sure that it's all done. Curriculum development costs for the summer, are those primarily teacher?
Larry?
Yes. Thank you. And. I think that brings me to the end. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Out of curiosity, at the Main Street Gym, maybe this is more of a question for Joyce currently, does the teacher have a walkie-talkie? Okay, because also the police department is right there also, not that it's, should give some people some comfort.
Yeah, yes. Yeah, I don't want to think we're a dire situation, but I think we're addressing a critical need. So I'm glad you said that. Teacher does have a, a two-way radio that connects to the, the main office in the school. And Joyce, the custodians have, have contact. So it's not, she's without communication. But this is, we see as a critical next step for us.
Okay. Um, last year we had a reduction in the summer work to make budget. Are we keeping it the same as prior years? Or, I'm not sure you can answer this.
I have to look at that. I think it's similar or maybe just slightly less.
Slightly less.
It might be similar slightly. I have to look at that. I can get back to that.
Okay. Um, substitutes, is there a wage, that line item, because going up by fifty thousand dollars, I'm just wondering how you arrived at that number? And do you track it, absences for whatever reason versus pulling, needing teacher coverage for meetings, PD, whatever? Is it tracked in that way?
So at this point in time, the way the, the absence is recorded and how it is covered is done through our timesheets and put in for the payment. And we are in the process of looking for some clerical time in order to go through those to tabulate that data. It's not something that we can run quickly off our system.
Well, it's not necessarily just our in-house teachers covering, but also substitutes that we have coming in. So it's both?
It's both, yes.
You're going to try to track it both ways?
Yes.
Okay, because I think that would be.
And I would say one, one thing that's kind of to add another layer complication to it, based upon some of the nature of some of the professional learning we can actually submit for reimbursement or sub-coverage when through BOSI's. We can get a percentage of that cost reimbursed through BOSI's aid depending on the nature of the professional learning experience.
Well, I don't even know if it's so much, I mean, as a doc, I mean, yes, we care about the cost of it all. But I think it also helps the board understand how much, for example, PD is going on. How much, honestly, how much teachers are out of the classroom for whatever reason.
Yeah.
You know, getting a handle on that because that has been a question.
Yeah, well.
That we are asked all the time.
Yeah, so I, I, I want to respond in a couple of ways, if I may, Maria. One, that Mary, what Mary's talking about is taking a look at it in a, in a different way. Because some of the challenges where it gets muddy is differentiating when a teacher leaves for a CSE meeting versus a teacher that's out for some other purpose. But, you know, one commitment that, that we do have, and I think we've talked about it twice this week already, is that through our professional development planning that's going to occur through the course of, of this spring and moving forward, is that there is a commitment to, to a, a reduction in teacher pullout from, from the classroom. So I think there's going to be a component of that that's going to certainly filter in into future data.
I'm glad to hear that commitment going forward. Um, early world language. I know that we posted for this position as a French slash Spanish-speaking teacher. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe.
We, we posted initially, when the current position, we posted for French slash Spanish. We were unsuccessful and we identified a very strong Spanish teacher. So the effort here would be to round out the, the two by having one teacher of Spanish, one teacher of French, and that they would teach between the two elementary schools.
I'm sorry, because I thought I saw the posting on OLS for a teacher for both.
We need a, a teacher at the high school as both French and Spanish.
That is what my confusion is. Okay, so we are looking to hire a French teacher that is hopefully FLESS certified, right? For the elementary level.
Correct.
Great, okay. Um.
Is there any benefit to having the teacher duly certified? I feel like we spoke about this last year. Sorry, I couldn't.
I, I, I think the poll is, we talked about that.
It would be, it would be a great benefit, but there aren't many people out there.
Right. Um, yes, early world language at the elementary level. I understand what everyone was asking about looking forward-thinking and not necessarily next year because I do agree with Dr. Harrison's comments earlier that all the schools, you know, we have a lot of initiatives going on at different schools. People are being pulled in different ways. Um, and I do worry about the bandwidth of our teachers and our support staff. So while I would love to see eventually a true FLESS program with an S here in Irvington, I think that goal is something down the road, but we really need to, you know, we did this in two parts. We did not, the board, for financial reasons, even though we supported it, we did not authorize fully implementing this program with two teachers. So I think we need to let this, you know, hire both positions, work out the kinks and reevaluate down the road and see, you know, what's working, what's not, and make the determination, you know, given all of our other existing programs that we have here. So I just kind of wanted to say that for the record, that would love to see that one day. But know that one day is not next year or maybe the year after.
And I'll, I'll echo that as well. I think it's probably more for the benefit of Mary who wasn't here, just to keep it in the way back of your mind as we move forward. That was, I think, ultimately what everybody wanted. But we understand this is how we're rolling it out and we respect, I totally respect how it's being done. But, and I'm excited to see how it evolves, so.
Okay, and then one other question about the PE, uh, chair position. Can you just clarify what the difference is between what this person would be doing versus the director of athletics? Because I feel like some of the things that you described fell under the director of athletics duties and maybe there's a plan to separate them, but.
Yeah, I, I think, yes, there would be oversight from a director of athletics. So when you think historically, Mr. McCormick, currently Mr. Hanson, that they provide oversight of the program and supporting what their needs are. But there's a collegial teacher component. And it's one of the few departments where there, the chair position, so to speak, is an administrator. And it's an old model that I think grew out well before I was here, when the athletic director position actually sat within the IFA bargaining unit. And I think some of those responsibilities just carried with it through time. So realistically, it, it's a, it's a teacher leadership role. And it's what happens in most school districts. You still would have an administrator that would oversee those given areas. But this would provide for teacher leadership, supporting the growth of teachers that would be steering and leading their peers across the district.
Okay, thank you. And really the balance of my questions are about the one-to-one initiative, so. Mr. Friedman?
I, I think everyone else has addressed all of the questions I had, so I don't need to hear myself talk more. So Beth, if you wanted to now circle back to the one-to-one piece.
So I want to preface my remarks by saying that I was very surprised to see this request to expand outside of Irvington Middle School. And I do need to refer to some prior meetings of this board and specifically a presentation in October of two thousand eighteen that was provided by Raina Core and Jesse Lubinski prior to the budget discussion of the IMS program and a technology plan that is on our website for two thousand eighteen to twenty-one, which discusses certain professional development needs and certain meetings that are supposed to be taking places in terms of the technology plan. So I want to mention those things before I make my remarks. Essentially, my understanding after reviewing the presentation and the documents that I described to you and my own recollection of the meetings before this board, is that the one-to-one initiative was presented to this board as an initiative that was for Irvington Middle School. It was for grades six, seven, and eight. And there were three specific fogey of policy that were raised in that context for that building. Those being, one about discipline and the code of conduct, the other being Amplify, which was a specific Chromebook-based curriculum, and the third being equity specifically on the data in the building of Irvington Middle School. And in light of those, and in light on the, of the focus on professional development for that specific program and reports received by this board that I was told I could mention, that a substantial number of staff in the middle school would like to see additional professional development related to that initiative, including small group work on PLRD days. I find it entirely way beyond the, way early to be discussing any sort of extension to another building. So my question is specific, since we're supposed to somehow talk about questions. I looked throughout this presentation. I see nothing about professional development related to the one-to-one initiative. Is, am I somehow missing this?
So it wasn't directly included in the presentation? No, it would have been enveloped into, into other categories. We didn't include all of the professional development. We have a superintendent conference day coming up next week, and the middle school will be focusing that day on instructional strategies and programs that are available to use for the one-to-one. The upcoming faculty meeting is also going to be focused on that. And I know that the leadership at the middle school in technology will be surveying our teachers regarding what kind of professional development is specific to the one-to-one they're looking for. And if you would like to add to that, that'd be wonderful.
Right, and just, you know, to say to the community, this is.
this is starting the sixth month of a new initiative in that building. I just want to admit that there...
And I would say, but to draw a parallel, just as we are with early world language, right? And that we're six months in and looking to add another position there as well.
I would just say that the difference is, is that, per Beth's point...
Thank you.
With the foreign language, we wanted to start with two. This wasn't, shouldn't have been an expansion here. We could only find one last year, right? So that's just the difference.
We were only able to approve one last year because of the budget constraints.
Right, right. And the ask for the Chromebooks...
Your proposal was...
But the idea, but the idea was there for...
It was a chunk.
Okay, okay. Let's hear from Dr....
One at a time, one at a time.
Yeah. And we just, we just walked all over you going to the mic.
So professional development?
So yeah, so with respect to professional development, I guess I want to say a couple of things. First off, we have spent several of our PLRD days thus far offering professional development opportunities for our staff. There have been, there's been a great deal of learning over the course of several years with respect to the use of devices in classrooms. We've done work going back now, supported by our Building Technology Committee, which is made up of myself, the Director of Technology, and quite a number of our teachers. We have done work to support our staff in growing their use of technology in their classrooms across a couple of different ways. Most recently, with a focus on Chromebooks or, you know, devices in classrooms. What we know to be true, though, is that until this year, teachers didn't have the ability to live in the world of a one-to-one environment.
Surely.
Right, and so while we have done a great deal of learning around the use of the Google Suite, around Google Classroom, around the tools that we're using more and more and more, and we're using previously, there's a limit to the professional learning experience that you can have until you kind of live in the world that you can actually implement and use it. So to that end...
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
There's a limit to the extent to which you can practice the professional learning until you live in the world...
I'll push back on that a little bit if I can.
Can you just let him finish his...
Yeah, but I don't know what that means. I can't, because I don't know what it means.
Then let's not push back.
I don't know what that means.
Okay, so let me say it differently. So while we can learn about how to use Chromebooks in our classrooms, while we can learn how to use the tools that come along with the Google Suite or other applications in our classrooms, actually engaging in the practice of living in a one-to-one environment requires living in a one-to-one environment, right? And so prior to this year, that was not the case for our teachers.
Thank you.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, except in very targeted pockets. So thus far this year, we have spent some of the professional learning time that we've had, our PLRD times, you know, with having multiple objectives in front of us this year. We've spent some of those on opportunities for teachers to engage in further professional learning. As Mary mentioned a minute ago, tomorrow's PLRD and faculty meeting back-to-back will be a further extension of that with then a tie-in to the superintendent's conference day next week. That's been our plan kind of all along. I guess I want to say that I'm really encouraged by some of the results that we've received from our teachers with respect to their desire for extended professional learning. That shows that there's a real interest in this implementation, that we're looking to continue to grow in our practice with the use of the devices in our classrooms and with the opportunities that they provide. And so I see that desire as expressed as one to say, what we're doing so far is positive, and there's an opportunity to continue to do more. And so that's kind of where we go from here.
That's very exciting, and I have to say, you know, I think other members of the board have been so much looking forward to hearing more about the success of the program within Irvington Middle School, or any challenges it has reached. But that doesn't change the fact that, in my opinion, it's premature to be asking to have it leave your building of Irvington Middle School. That is where my comments are, and that has to do with not only the process and procedure about how such a request probably, I would have been preferred to have what before the board, rather than me first hearing about it at a PTSA meeting a couple of months ago, where it was sort of dropped into a presentation. This has nothing to do with anything Mr. Sotile said about PD. And I'm really happy to hear that there has been PD this year. That's a wonderful thing to hear, and that we have additional PD coming. But wouldn't it be great to hear more about how the program has done 2019, '20, and then 2020, '21, before decisions are made about expanding it beyond the borders of that school or the walls of that school? And I'll leave it to my other trustees to talk, because I'm sure my colleagues have things they'd like to say.
Can I add to Beth's comments? When we heard about the one-to-one initiative last year, we heard a variety of reasons of why it was appropriate for the middle school. In addition to your, what you said earlier, there was also the use of personal devices, cell phones, at the middle school, which was another benefit of having the Chromebooks, that the kids wouldn't have the cell phones. What I'm not hearing this year, though, because I too was very surprised. I thought the presentation approving the Chromebooks was a very specific middle school initiative.
Very well done.
If there was anything about moving it up, then that went over my head as well. That was not made clear. I didn't understand that. What I'm not hearing is why this is appropriate for the high school. What needs, other than having a device, why does the high school? Because the high school needs and the middle school needs are very different. Like Google Classroom, Google Suite, that was being used at the high school before it was being used at the middle school. They're just two different...
No, that was, the implementation of Google Classroom happened a year earlier at the middle school than at the high school.
Versus the high school? Okay. Okay, I'll drop that. Out of all of those classrooms in the high school, how many of them have the Chromebook bins in them? Approximately percentage, do you know?
I can shoot that.
Oh.
Do the mic.
Jay!
Jay.
Jay.
Sorry about that. So 100% of them have Chromebook buckets in their classrooms. Some have more Chromebooks in those buckets, lowering the ratio of devices to students. But ultimately, every classroom has gotten an increase. By department, correct, by department. So every department was allocated devices. This came out of the middle school redeployment. So we were able to take those devices. There was no extra money added into that program. So it was just a transfer of the devices to increase the ratio.
So, which goes back to my original question, because I wasn't sure that many of my other fellow board members understood that currently, I didn't know it was 100%, but I thought a lot of them, with the exclusion of science classes, I believe, have most, I thought most, I didn't know all, had Chromebooks bins in their classrooms, so...
So again, just to clarify, it's department-based?
Oh, it's department-based.
And the department has allocated where those classrooms received extra devices, and that was only based on the redeployment. Previously, those classrooms had devices. This is just an influx of more devices.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess for me, I need to understand why we're starting to roll this up. So I'm assuming this is going for ninth grade, then the year after, 10th grade, and so on, until everyone has devices.
Yeah, so I would go back, and not going to look to anybody, but my own recollection, my belief and my understanding from the discussions that we had last year, we modeled specifically how they would roll forward from one year to the next. And we talked specifically about the idea of purchasing one set of Chromebooks a year to be able to roll that out from one grade to the next. So from my perspective, the understanding was that this was an evolution of the work that was happening, and thinking that we were educating eighth graders in an environment where they were being taught to be able to utilize the devices, the Chromebooks, as a critical part of their education, of their communication, their collaboration, their organization, their research, that we were giving them a tool in eighth grade. And that, to me, it almost, from a learning perspective, it seems that we're giving kids tools through middle school, and then we would be taking them away. So the progress that I thought that we had modeled last year was that it would be looking at implementation in the middle school. And then coming this year, it would be whether funds were there to explore a wider-scale rollout for the entire high school, or looking at it at one grade at a time. And I can tell you, walking away from it, not only did we, wasn't the understanding of everybody involved in the process on my side that, like, literally to the detail, that, like, how we numbered and coded devices, and I don't know the right term, like inventory tags associated with them, or associated with graduation years, and how kids progressed through the schools. So there was very clearly in our minds the thought that this was something that was to be progressive. Now, if the board has questions and has a different expectation, I think we have that conversation. If there's questions that you want answered, let's ask those questions, and we will answer them. You know, the idea of saying that hearing something was dropped, and, you know, at a PTSA...
I would like to apologize. I was like you saying that you felt that what I said was being disrespectful, and perhaps I should have said that. I will say that, from my perspective as a board member, I had tried to explore what had gone on in the Irvington Middle School rollout of the one-to-one as early as October of 2019. And I was asked to please wait until there would be a presentation from the middle school. And I have been very patient, so I apologize if my lack of patience has been revealed in the way I'm discussing this topic. I did not expect anyone in this room. That being said, our recollections of the discussions that were had publicly, and now I'm speaking myself, and any other trustee can join in, differs, I am sorry to say, from this conversation. There seems to be a different recollection of the presentation, the very detailed presentation of why this program was one that was very good and necessary for Irvington Middle School. So I do apologize.
I was going to support, sorry.
Except that I would say that when we go back, and certainly, you know, that idea there were different components to that conversation, that there were policies that we had to address and policies that we had to revise accordingly over the summertime. There was that idea of discussion of equity, which in my mind doesn't stop with the middle school. So that's, you know, where there was divergent thinking and pathways being pursued here. And Amplify was used as an example where it would be beneficial in the middle school. And the Amplify pilot data that was presented was used not only to say that it was a necessity for that particular science curriculum or those science resources, but the data was utilized to be able to get feedback at the success of the program and the students utilizing the devices in their school experience. So I don't think we looked at it in just the box of Amplify. We looked at it more holistically of saying this is the experience of using one-to-one devices in a particular classroom or in the school environment and the benefits of it. So in my mind, it was bigger than just saying Amplify and what's happening with science.
So I, yeah, so I was going...
I just want to, because I never said it was just Amplify. I made it very clear that from my perception and my recollection, it was a three-fold presentation. It was about discipline, which had to do with the code of conduct. And as my colleague Maria mentioned, the use of cell phones, which had been reflected as a problem in that building. So we can fold that in under one. It was the rollout of Amplify, and I do not believe that Amplify is a curriculum in the high school. Anyone want to confirm on that? So there was no Amplify. And it was very important to have a one-to-one initiative to allow for the success of that important rollout of a new science curriculum that was in keeping with the new science standards. I hope that's what they're still called, New Generation Science Standards.
Next Gen.
Next Gen, and third, the equity issue. But that equity issue was couched in terms that were specific to the population of Irvington Middle School. So it was, for me, a three-part thing, which did lead to my support last year of the request.
I just want, I have the same recollection that Maria and Beth had. While not on the board, I attended the meeting. And I think one of the things that had stood out was about the discipline and the bringing of your own device at the middle school age. So I would ask the same question, is to more clearly define the advantages to the rollout. And I hear you when you're saying, obviously, you're giving them a device in eighth grade, and now you're taking it away in ninth. I can respect that. But what are the clearer educational advantages to doing this? And then the other thing I would say, I always think about how things were rolled out and like sort of the lessons we learned when we rolled it out, as we're rolling it out in the middle school, right? Because it's still a new program. And how that's going to influence the rollout at the high school, and just sort of what that plan looks like. And then, of course, we always have conversations about bandwidth, which came up in that meeting as well. So to better understand if we have the bandwidth to support the rollout at the high school. Sorry, Jay, I'm throwing a lot of things at you.
You mean technological...
The Wi-Fi.
The ability for all the machines to connect.
Wi-Fi.
So to your point about Wi-Fi, we have gone through the process of evaluating all of the Wi-Fi access points throughout the district. We've done heat maps and saturation tests to know where the best placement would be. We've increased the, actually, the brand has actually increased the number of devices. So based on the newer models, it could actually support double the amount of devices. And we've gone through and replaced those devices and moved those devices where less saturation is necessary. We've also gone through the process, and will continue to, increase the speeds in the network through our E-rate, as well as, which is an open process as we go. And we are looking to do this in a way to keep everything stable. We have seen very few issues regarding to the Wi-Fi specifically. It has been identified as specific to devices, not our network, not our infrastructure as a whole. Hope that answers your question.
Can I ask for clarification there real quickly? When you say specific to devices?
Sure, so we have a number of devices that did have Wi-Fi configuration issues. We've sent those out to Acer. We've wiped them based on manufacturer recommendations. And those devices, at this point, have been rectified.
So just sort of, just to going back to some of the other things I said, as we talk about the rollout at the middle school, what were the achievements, the successes, and what were some of the lessons learned so that we know going into the high school that we don't, we're not going to encounter those same challenges?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
So I wanted to, oh, you want to say something, David?
If we could say one, let's do one at a time.
Thank you, Brian.
I don't know what that means.
One question at a time. So if you have any questions answered, please.
Okay, thanks.
So with respect to achievements, one of the things that, and it was discussed here a few minutes ago, with respect to buckets of Chromebooks being in classrooms. And we lived in the world of having buckets or tech tubs, as the actual brand name goes, of five to 10 devices in classrooms for several years, along with carts that were able to be signed out. And that was where our teachers had the access to use devices within their classes. And so one of the, almost right-of-way achievements essentially is, once we distributed devices, was students had a device that they brought with them from class to class to class. That eliminated the need for a student to go into a classroom, let's say it was a day where the teacher had been able to sign out the one cart that we had in the building, go get their, go get a device from the cart, log on to that device, get it connected to Wi-Fi, and then begin work, and then somewhere later in the class, log off that device, bring it back to the cart, plug it back in. When you add up the minutes in one class and then extrapolate them over the course of a day, you're talking about, you know, and I conservatively estimated that somewhere between three to four minutes per class. So that's about a 10% increase in instructional time as a result of having a device that you bring with you from class to class to class. That's not to mention the access. You never walk into the library as a student on your own time and are, you know, unable to use a device because all of the devices that we have in the library are used, or whatever the case may be. So that's an achievement instructionally and with respect to student engagement. With respect to the cellphone issue, from our standpoint, and I know Ms. Daly can speak to this as well, well, I would be, you know, incorrect if I were to say we haven't seen any cell phones at all this year in Irvington Middle School. We have seen a dramatic decrease in the time spent having to address cellphone issues. Certainly, it is a very clear rule that cell phones are not to be used during the school day, as you can see from how many students have them out before and after the school day. So during the day, you know, it is definitely something that has no longer been the issue that it once was for us. So that's been a huge win for us from a, you know, from a distractibility standpoint, from a disruption-to-instruction standpoint. And then I'll get to actual in-class use of the devices. You know, as we've looked at what teachers are doing and students are doing, the places where the devices are used most are the places where they've always been used most. Science classes, social studies classes, ELA classes. It's not as if students are going from class to class and on a device in each of their classes. When we surveyed students about the number of classes per day in which they typically use a device, typically use a device, it's, you know, it's in that, you know, the bulk of those numbers are right in that, that three to four class per day range. So about half their day, they're not on devices. But in those classes, they're now engaged in, in activities where they were sometimes able to do them if the teacher could secure the devices, or if they could spare the class time to, to collect the buckets that they could borrow from, from their colleagues across the hall. But now they can do them at any time. There's an opportunity for spontaneity with respect to doing online research or, or, you know, exploring a topic that comes up in the course of discussion. There's the, there's the ability for learning that takes place outside of the classroom as teachers are able to provide feedback that students can get in real time on their work outside of class. The idea of teachers having to collect a stack of papers, write on every one of those papers, and then get them back at some point, that, that's, that's an idea that is, that is, you know, quickly going, giving way to, to more, you know, real-time feedback and the ability to address students' needs as writers in an ongoing fashion. Our teachers have, have been able to do quicker and, and, you know, therefore more actionable assessments through the use of things like Google Forms that they're able to embed in their Google Classroom. So students come in, open up their device, there's a, there's a short assessment that's there for the students to do. That, that is then the, the prompt that the teacher can use to set up groups for that day based upon student success or, or lack thereof on a particular assessment or, or questions that they may or may not have. So those are some examples of the instructional advantages that we've been able to attain and can attain reliably, because the teacher knows that the students will have devices when they walk into class, as opposed to hoping that they can secure a cart or a couple of buckets at that.
How about lessons learned?
So lessons learned, I would say, our primary lessons learned thus far are logistical. The, the reality, you know, is that we do know that we have to have ways for students to charge devices. While we, we've instructed students to bring home their devices and charge them and bring them in charge, it is one more task for a middle school student to, to get in the habit of doing. And while our students are by, by and large, you know, if you wanted to go on a percentage basis, very successful at that, a student not having a charged device is, is a bigger issue than a student not having a pencil, which, you know, is a, is a similarly unprepared-for class kind of a thing, but more easily addressed, you know, in, in terms of the pencil. As students encounter, you know, at times, challenges with devices, you know, we've had to set up a way for them to report those challenges so that our tech staff can do that. We've actually overcome that now. There's a, there's a way for students, if they can get on their device, but they're having a problem with it, they can quickly report it from their device. And if not, we have a, a workstation set up in the counseling office where students can go in and report it, so they don't have to try to work through the clerical staff and, and so forth. So there's, there's been a streamlining of that process. But that was a lesson learned early on. In, in our library, I, I mentioned charging, but we just installed a, a, a charging station for students to use in our library as another place for students to be able to do that if they don't have a charger with them, for instance. You know, the, the last thing I would just say is, and I don't wanna say this is a lesson learned, because this is a lesson we had learned long ago, and we knew that we were going to have to continue to work toward it. But the, the ongoing need for continued professional learning is real, and, and it is something that we're committed to and we care deeply about. This is our work now. Now that we have the ability to not only engage in the learning, but then turn around and put that learning into practice, it's, it's, it's a more appropriate time to continue that learning in, in a deeper fashion than was possible before. So those would be my, my takeaway so far.
So I'd like to just sort of tack on a little bit to some thoughts, because what I heard a lot of was process-oriented, like you said yourself, lessons learned, and a lot of process-oriented reasons to move this forward. Personally, you don't have to sell me on the benefits, right? Like I'm loud and clear, seen it, I've done it, I had it one-to-one school, et cetera. So my, my issue and where I support pretty much what Beth said in terms of scaling at this level is I, I haven't heard anything about instructional, right? And I, I haven't. I've heard about, you know, the charging, and I've heard about the, the numbers and the insurance and the this, and, but I haven't heard about how their instructional coherence. I know there are some classes that use it one way, some classes that use it another way, some classes that don't use it at all. You even mentioned a minute ago that people have an option to take PD around this. So to me, that's not a real implementation, right? To me, that's, that's getting our feet wet, right? And feet wet we've gotten, and it's been a good experience for many students, and we've learned some valuable lessons. For me to think about this in a budgetary sense, going forward to scale, and I've scaled things like this personally, is I, you know, there's gotta be some business rules, there have to be, you know, and how we're gonna use these things in schools. And, you know, are certain classrooms gonna take notes with it, are certain classes gonna do research with it, are certain classes gonna do projects with it? What are the, you know, are, you know, the...
Oh, Amplify?
Amplify, I wanna call it a advantage.
Right. Versus, versus the Earth Science Program, which is different.
You know, I haven't seen it being used really in Earth Science.
I don't believe it is. Although they use it for...
Just to look up facts.
I believe it, no, 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 I believe it's used for, for data plotting.
For the graphing and stuff. But, but, I mean, again, I'd like to, in terms of scaling, I think focusing, for me, less on the, the process-oriented stuff, which is something in a scale-up that you, you always are refining regardless, right? No matter how large you scale something, when you're thinking about processes, those are always gonna be fine-tuned. But what's the instructional spine here? You know, what, what are, you know, the, I, I can't imagine that it would be optional if we're gonna go one-to-one for teachers to have the option to do professional development. If it's gonna be a one-to-one environment where kids are gonna carry this book around with them...
I don't think, I don't think he said it was optional. He said there's been the opportunity for...
Hey, so what does that mean?
Not that, meaning that they've provided...
They have the opportunity, do they take it, do they not take it? Like, what does that mean?
Dave, don't be flip.
I'm not being flip, Brian.
You are, you are.
No, I'm not, Brian, I'm being clear. And we need to be clear on this. What does that mean?
I think to clear, make it clear, he was giving examples of PD that was being given, whether it was on PLRD days or whether it was being, they were using superintendent's conference days. This is not optional. This is what the building principal schedules his people to do. So I think, I think maybe you heard it differently.
Okay, good, so that's clear, that's what I heard. I heard that it was an opportunity that they could take it. But if that's, so they're all taking it, then they should all be doing, implementing the things that are being learned in the professional developments, right? And if those things are, what are those things that are being learned? How, how would they be reflected in student work? How would they be reflected in things that we can think about scaling from a financial point of view as a board? That's, that's it for my part.
So I, I just wanna, I, I know Jay wants to say a few words here, but I, I wanna just add a couple of things. With respect to optional, I don't believe I used the word optional. I think I said that tomorrow, all of our staff would be engaged in a PLRD faculty meeting...
You said opportunity, sorry. You're right.
He took that wrong word differently.
Yeah, you're right. You didn't say optional, you said opportunity, I apologize.
So then that, then that's clear. Well, I know Jay, you want, you want to add something?
So just to give you a, a little bit of a heads-up of what's coming tomorrow. So we have three sessions, they are not optional. You have the option to choose from the three sessions, so making sure that that's clear. One of them is on Google Forms and Assessment. Another is on Flipgrid, which is another assessment tool. And the last is on Paradeck, another assessment tool. So if anything, assessment...
Could you say that, para?
Paradeck?
Paradeck, thank you.
Yep, Paradeck. Google Forms with Assessment and Flipgrid, all assessment. So tomorrow is actually focused really on summative and formative assessment without the use of those devices. That would not be possible. It would be asynchronous learning. It would not be something that we would be able to get quick feedback, check-ins, exit tickets, questions from students from outside of school hours. So again, giving them this device, allowing them to have that as an assessment tool is a huge part of what we're going, moving forward. And based on what we do tomorrow, we are gonna gather feedback from those sessions and do deep dives into two different areas for the superintendent conference that. So I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Well, it breaks further questions, but yes, it does answer them for sure, thank you.
But nobody's atta, I just wanna make it clear. I'm not, I'm not questioning the benefit of what's going on in Irvington Medical, uh, Medical School. Well, I made you a Medical School now.
You promoted us. One student, those, those are amazing projects.
It's amazing. Irvington Middle School. I think, you know, it is great to hear about the PD. It is great to hear about the, the, the use in social studies, science, and ELA. It would be interesting, but tonight wasn't set up for like a full report. And I don't, I don't wanna say that, I'm not trying to put anyone back on their heels trying to do something that was not in the agenda. I really am just concentrating on a specific budgetary issue involving a, an expansion of something.
So I, I think when we, we think about processes, we step back and we think about expectations and, and where expectations exist and how they're being communicated and comprehended. And clearly, this is an example where there was a disconnect. But I'd also step back and say that we, we need to look at this in two different ways. We're looking at balancing a budget and arriving at a budget, and thirty-seven thousand five hundred shouldn't be the point by which we're just having the conversation. The conversation that, that, that the board is initiating is one in and around philosophy. And, and if there's a philosophical question or discussion to be had, I think it would be productive for us to organize questions that can be answered in a, in a constructive manner in which we're not being responsive in, in the way that was just identified. And, and reactive is, is, is the way to do it. You know, heading through this process, I'll be clear, I think there was a conversation that happened in, with executive team at one point, another conversation that happened at curriculum committee and, and looking to provide some additional information related to that, to this initiative, and I thought we had hit that mark. But if there's other questions that, that need to be addressed, if there's other questions or concerns, let's collect them, organize them, and that informs what our next conversation is. I don't know that we necessarily need to belabor it this evening, but I think there's clearly a, a, a point where, you know, administration is, has some sights going one way and the board is saying, let's slow down. And I think we can look at it a way of, of saying ambition versus caution versus looking at it in, in a manner which, because of the emotion of the situation and, and how we landed where we are, it feels like that there's a degree of, you know, conflict to some extent.
So I, I, I don't really think that that was intended, and apologies if that's how it came across. I think there was a big disconnect in terms of, from some, if not most of us, in terms of rolling this forward into the high school. With any new initiative, there are going to be hiccups. I, you know, I've heard many hiccups, and I keep saying, reported to PAC, and I know it's been on the agenda and discussed that every PAC meeting. Things happen, I know that, but, and I think we all know that, particularly in the first year of a very ambitious program.
But I think, and you are correct, I mean, the size of the money that we're talking about is in the scope of our multimillion budget is small. But everything has a value when we're talking about cutting clubs or stipends or what, paying for whatever, thirty-seven thousand, then roll it up for the next three years. This board is making a commitment. If we say yes to this, then we are making a commitment for the next four years.
It's thirty-seven thousand times four.
So, right. And, and again, it's a small, but it's still a commitment to something. And while the board saw, excuse me, while we, there was a presentation made last year as to why you, you know, that you guys were making the recommendation for middle school, that to me is not transferring to the high school. Middle school and high school are two very different schools. You know, even learning, you know, you have AP curriculum, you have, you know, Project Lead the Way curriculum, what's the other one, science, forensics? Supa, Supa classes.
Very good.
So I guess for me, and I think based on a lot of conversations I've had with other board members, we need to see why, not just the, besides the equity and besides, you know, they had it in middle school and now they're not gonna have it, because the reality is, is when kids go to college, all this changes. You need computers. Colleges make lots of computers accessible to kids, so the equity question is really not an issue. But for example, a lot of colleges do not want your computers, this is just an example, in the classroom, during the class, because they want you taking notes because they don't trust what you're doing, social media and all of that, they'll tell you, they don't wanna see it. That's just an example, I'm not saying right or wrong, but I guess for us, we need to see why this is the recommendation to roll it up at the high school besides...
So I would say the idea of recommendation versus what the expectation. So not that we're expecting it from the board, but that...
What need are we filling by rolling them up?
So you're, you're asking, so I would say with the other questions that you have, let's circulate them.
Okay.
But I'm saying that it was what our expectation was based upon what our mental model was at the time. And where the disconnect was, is I'm not talking about necessarily in expectations and where we're going now, but in the process going back a year ago and the dialogue that we had a year ago, I would say that in, in our mind was, the thought was that you would do this and then it would grow. It was, so, so I think we're making more of it than it needs to be, frankly. So if, if there's, I've, I've jotted a couple of questions down, if there's other questions, I would ask that you circulate with the board. And then when we come to the next, next meeting, you know, there's some decisions to be made from, from my part in where we're going. And frankly, there's other opportunities of things that we can, we can certainly fund. So if this is that idea of, like I said before, ambition versus slow down, let's have some more caution and develop it, that's fine, let's have a conversation about that, and let's look at how we progress, one, with what the future of one-to-one looks like, and two, look where those other opportunities lie, because heaven knows that my colleagues, well, there's another half a dozen things on each of their lists that they, that they would be, they would be wrestling to spend thirty-seven thousand dollars for.
I would just make one suggestion, because I think, and I wasn't being flipped, David, by any chance. I literally was looking for clarity, because I misunderstood the term, so I don't want you to, I was being flipped at all, Ryan. You as well, there was no flipness there. I would, this, I know I've beleaguered this for years, and I know it's coming, but I think a big part of the backbone of, of where you, this conversation should take places around the professional development. And I think a lot of the questions, at least I know for myself, is because I have, there's no plan to look at and say, this is how something might scale and how the staff is gonna come along with that scaling, right? So that might be something to feed into that conversation.
And can I just drop something into this conversation? I just have to reply to something that Maria said, and I, I just wanna say this, this is more aspirational. You know, if we look very carefully at how to make this the most successful program in Irvington Middle School, we will have very important lessons to learn from. And during the period of time, and I'm not gonna set a number of years I think would be appropriate, that's for a different conversation or certain questions that would be submitted, one might think that during that time, just as we're moving from smart boards to line boards...
New line.
New line boards and those kinds of technological changes, we might find that in another building, just like we have some Apple products in our Dow's lane for certain of the children's activities, we may find that the high school is a place where other things would be more optimum for that group of students to work with and learn. As an example, we can talk about the fact that in the middle school, because we're using Google products, we're limited to using sheets for our data analysis or our work in graphing. But in college, and I, I happen to be one of the oldest people in this room who has recently been in a graduate program in a college, we were expected to use Excel and to be extremely good at it, which I never was. And these are not items that are provided in G Suite. It may be that in the future, after we learn more at the middle school level, we will learn more about what is more appropriate for the high school, but to be able to make a good determination about that. And I think that's a really wonderful future to look forward to.
I'll say, that was awesome.
Well, we'd like to have everyone to feel a little bit better, because we sort of...
Thank you to Jay and Dave, because obviously, we threw a lot of questions at you that you weren't anticipating, so, good job.
And it's just one line, thirty-page show, while we move on. Thank you, Brian.
Oliks, thank you very much, have a good night. Appreciate it.
Good night, thank you, everyone. So we now move on to item nine point one, which is our consent agenda. Any questions before we move on?
About the consent agenda?
I think I had one question.
About the consent agenda?
Yeah, about the consent agenda.
Hold on.
Just one second, maybe, maybe it's a little... Oh, the, the, I won't say it again, but the school calendar is what I just wanted to reiterate again, the professional development plan.
Heard you.
I know. Just wanna make sure.
You're on the curriculum committee, you know what's coming.
I was on it too last year.
Okay. Any questions?